Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to call the order of this public meeting of the Board of Johnson County Commissioners on this twelfth day of April two thousand twenty-one at three o'clock P M. Please pray with us. If you would care to, then we'll stand for the legislative.
Would you bow with me for a moment, please? Dear heavenly Father, as always, we come to you in grateful hearts. Thank you so much for the blessings that you bestow upon us each and every day. Dear Lord, we're really hungry for good news. The good news is the rising of your son on Easter. We just celebrated, but we'd still like some more good news, dear Lord. If you could see the Senate our way, we'd greatly appreciate it. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Let the nations testify of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Right now, we'll go to the White River Township Fire Protection District, reestablishment of the cumulative fire fund, public hearing. We will now open the public hearing. Is there any public comment before we get started? Is there any on Zoom? That's odd to have to ask. I would like to now then close the public hearing and start on further discussion. Go forward. It's in your court.
Good afternoon. I'm Chairman L Chief of the White River Township Fire Department, and the district board met a duly called meeting and authorized me to present to the commissioners the reestablishment of our cumulative fund at the statutory rate. And the reasoning for this is we are experiencing the same growth in White River Township or more so than the rest of the county. And what we've tried to do over the years is spend wisely and establish our rates as the statute says, so that we can have slow temper growth over the years. We've been able to do that, which has enabled us to partner with Center of Schools and Bartersville Community Fire Department to build a fire station at a significant reduced cost to taxpayers. We've partnered with NDOTS to build headquarters to functional replacement for I sixty-nine. We have purchased a reserve ladder that we share with Bartersville at less than twenty percent the cost of a new one. These are all smart moves. It does not negate the need to continue measured growth because of the growth of the community. We were able to do those things because we spent wisely and because we continued the cumulative funds with the projects that are coming up, the sewer, the interstate, street improvements, we're going to see more accidents, and we're still going to have the need to replace capital expenditures such as fire trucks and equipment. We think this is the wisest way to do this. You were provided with information from our accountant that showed that our tax rate has decreased from two thousand eighteen through two thousand twenty-one, and we would ask that the commissioners reestablish that rate at the statutory maximum rate.
First off, gentlemen, I want to thank Ben for his response to the questions I had. Ben, you said in your email that reestablishing the rate to point three thirty, uh, point oh three 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 would bring in an additional twenty to twenty-five thousand and twenty-two revenue as a net gain. And when you say net gain, so you're just talking twenty to twenty-five thousand, correct?
Correct.
Because you've experienced, when we went from eighteen to nineteen, even though your fuel rate went down, you still had a net gain of nineteen thousand four hundred seventeen dollars. And then in two thousand twenty, there was no change in rate, but you still experienced twenty-one thousand thirteen dollar net gain. And then projecting into your two thousand twenty-one budget with the reduction of another point oh oh ten, you're still going to experience a twenty-two thousand six hundred fifty-six dollar gain. So my question would be, do you really need to reestablish the rate at this time, given the net gains you've been experiencing every year?
Well, that's a judgment called by elected officials, is whether or not to increase it. But I guess what happens is the assessed value growth in the district was up seven percent from page two thousand twenty-one with I sixty-nine coming through. The issue that we're going to have is that with the cumulative fund, that rate is not going to go up. Our it's not going to go back to statutory maximum unless it's reestablished. So as growth continues to grow in the district, the cumulative fire levy is not going to go up with that growth unless the rate is reestablished.
Yeah, I understand that you have a reduction in rate based on the increase in A V.
Yeah.
But what I'm saying is even with the reduction in rate, the increased A V is still giving you a net gain of in excess of twenty thousand dollars. So if you reestablish the rate at point oh three three three, given what we've just experienced here, I think you'd be looking at somewhere between a forty and fifty thousand dollar net gain next year.
I guess we're not going to get the additional growth over the state, about a four percent growth, probably won't get that unless the rate's reestablished. So the levy will go up four percent, but it's not going to keep up with the property value increase unless that rate breaks reestablished.
Yeah.
Ron, you're correct on that, okay? It would be in addition. But here's the deal.
You need to tell us who you are.
Mike Hoffman. Those of you who don't know who I am, it's short and one of the slide. But the difference is this, you know, because of COVID last year, we were, we spent about four hundred grand over budget that we were not able to get reimbursed. That money came out of the fund. We came to city county council, and they allowed us to spend money that we'd saved over the years, and that was three hundred grand alone. Then we came and we asked to jointly build this fire department, this firehouse emergency operating center with the school and with city Bardisa, or Bardisa Community Fire Department. Well, then eight hundred seventy-five thousand as well came out of the fund. Those are two things we've never been able to do. So you're really, yeah, we're going to pick up another twenty-five thousand, but an ambulance alone is two hundred and fifty grand on the deal. And so you got to replace us about every eight to ten years. This is how we do that, let alone a fire truck, which is, you know, six or seven hundred thousand dollars today.
I understand.
So it really is just, we're trying to make up that million dollars we have spent the last year, which is, was a great investment. We had no, no, no option but to help the entire county with what we've done with COVID. And the deal with the firehouse, you know, to, to build a firehouse for less than a million dollars for two fire departments and a school was really a pretty tremendous problem.
I understand. So Ben, what the, with the, with the projected increase, then, what's the negative effect on the other taxing units? Would it be the same, or is the thirty-four hundred eleven dollars you're showing on page three, the negative impact on the other taxing units?
Yeah, that's.
Excuse me, can you state your need for?
I'm sorry.
I need you to, Ben, and the other gentleman as well.
Ben Recker, financial consultant for White River.
Mike Hoffman, community liaison, White River Township Fire Department.
Sorry, forget the effect.
So the effect on the other taxing units is for property owners, direct to one percent, two percent, three percent rate caps. There's going to be no additional revenue gained on those properties. Instead, what's going to happen is that revenue is going to be reallocated among the units within the area. The district will get slightly more revenue because of how the slightly higher proportional tax rate, if the cumulative fire rate is reestablished. So that's where that comes from. What's not a total effect of twenty thousand dollars is because there will be some increases in revenue. Taxpayers outside of the city limits are not at the rate caps, and so there's going to be additional revenue gained on those properties. As part of the analysis that was sent out, we did earn the two hundred thousand dollar this, this tiny home, the fact it was a dollar, a little over a dollar.
But you didn't answer my question.
Sorry.
What's the negative impact, dollar impact on the other taxing units?
Oh, it's the three thousand dollars, which you.
The thirty-four eleven? Okay.
Yeah. Sorry about that.
That's the only question I had, huh?
So there's a motion.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and move to approve, and then we'll just see over the next year or two how it flows. I'm not sure you really need it, to be honest with you, given your current financial condition, but I know what you're trying to do out there, so I'll remember.
Second. I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signature public, saying nothing. Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you for your work.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Is the ambulance business still in the black?
Yeah, it's okay.
You don't need revenue there for capital equipment, right?
Is it okay to make it the green?
The what?
Is it okay to make it the green? Would that upset you?
The green?
Yeah, if we make it the green, we'll support more of ourselves.
I don't know what the green is. I only know white.
I'm with you. I know exactly what you're saying. In business, I like to be in the green.
Exactly. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. Drug Free Johnson County, approval of updated grantee contract for juvenile probation.
Hi there. Michelle McMahon, I'm the coordinator for Drug Free Johnson County.
Hi.
I'm coming to you today just because we had an update to one of our grants that we had previously requested approval for last month. Due to COVID last year, juvenile probation was unable to complete all of their grant funds, so they had to return some funds to us. Due to our state statutory requirements, we have to divide those funds, and there has to be a minimum of twenty-five percent of our total funds allocated into the three categories of prevention education, education, treatment intervention, and law enforcement. The rest can go into administrative. So I'm just asking for approval to give juvenile probation an additional amount that we have added. The total would be an additional eight hundred and nine dollars and twenty-five cents for this year's grant funds to kind of help them out since they weren't able to use all of those last year.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signature public, saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank you.
Judge Ganer, redevelopment commission, two thousand twenty annual report.
This is the report that has to be filed newly with both the council and the commissioners. So that's what you've got before you, calendar year twenty-one.
Any question? Do we have a motion to accept or stand? Second. I have a motion in a second. Any further? Hearing none, all those in favor, signature public, saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Youth Connections Program Update? Did I miss something? Discover Downtown Franklin?
Hi, I'm Shayna Gilbert with Youth Connections. I'm the executive director.
Whoever's going to speak, you want to have either of you speak?
This is Your Connection, I'm D D S.
Okay.
This was the next one on the agendas here.
We'll have to hold you off just a minute, ma'am, with Youth Connections there. I want to get it myself.
Okay.
Do you guys have any?
Yes.
Okay. It's just a little map of that. Do you want me to send it over?
Report people on it?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Jessica Giles with Discovery Downtown Franklin. I think originally it was just the submission for approval of usage of county property for our two thousand twenty-one festivals, specifically strawberries on the square for become lawn, holiday lighting. And I think Mayor Barnett called and mentioned also the farmer's market lot used for, on April twenty-fourth, for the fall or the spring vintage fest, as well as the farmer's market. I just wanted to give you guys this little graphic and ask, would it be easier, since half of the farmer's market that we usually use is now being torn apart because of the amphitheater? If we use the front of this lot, I know that county cars are parked here usually. And I talked with John Gaveman from the street department, would it be easier if we made, you know, temporary reserved parking signs and put it on the south part of the lot where the red square is, so that you guys wouldn't have to move your cars every Friday for when vendors would come, since the front, the northern part of that lot might be used for farmer's market? Would that be of interest to you guys?
Did you say Friday?
Sorry, Saturday. I mean Saturday.
Saturday, but we would have to move vehicles every Friday.
Instead, instead of you guys having to move them on a weekly basis, if we just made temporary reserved parking signs?
Which would be the surveyor, the commissioners pull cars, commissioners, kind of.
And they just stay on the southern part of the lot throughout the summer, just while the farmer's market is going.
Exactly. But we, if we park there, there'd be one, two, three, four vehicles that would have to move every Friday.
Well, the part that you've got xed out, I realize the part of that's already gone for the expansion of the market down there. But the part that's remaining, why don't you just utilize it in conjunction with the other parts you're wanting for the farmer's market? I think that would probably give you enough room to accommodate the farmer's market without him impacting the areas where we've got all the parking.
We usually just have like fifty vendors within the lot, is the only thing. And this is, it's just a unique year where we'll be at the amphitheater next year. We won't be within the lot again, so.
We're always trying to help, but.
How many cars do we have to move? Well, it depends on, I think, Ron, what are you saying, using what they've got in the red instead of what they've got in the?
Yeah, yeah. About half of this lot still exists, they've just taken out about this much. So what I'm saying is, if they take this and come down on half of that, that should be clear room for the farmer's market, fifty vendors.
Yeah, the problem is, is that this normally on Saturdays is used for, for parking, for the farmer's market. But we just don't have to move cars, because they're not.
Well, on a Saturday, this, most of this lot would be vacant anyway.
Except for the vehicles.
Yeah, except for some of the spots, but they would still have that to accommodate, plus they got all the street parking. It's just my thoughts on it. You know what I'm talking about? You want me to show you on here?
No, I, I see where you're talking about.
I guess my question would be is, why aren't they utilizing the one half that is not being used for construction? Are we xing out the whole thing?
I guess the X is a little larger than, it also includes that little line at the top part of the X. But still, we typically have around ten vendors on the part where there's like double parking spaces.
Yeah, I know that that lot's pretty full.
Yeah, and also it's, it's kind of a thing with our returning vendors who are in that back line, a lot of our produce farmers, they typically drive their produce trucks right in. They won't have that capability since that entrance is no longer available.
The only reason I would support this is to move our county vehicles out of there, because you're going to have a lot of vendors out there, you're going to have a lot of public in there on the weekend, and I know we're going to end up, one of those cars, one of our cars is going to get banged up. We have to deal with that. Yeah, it won't, the permanent sign will stay up, so it won't affect during the week. We can, we can move. The four vehicles. Basically, it would be just, it would be the surveyor and the, two surveyor and the two commissioner pull cars, well, three, I guess. It'll be five vehicles. Security or no, or something? Well, no, I understand, we can take up, we, nobody, I don't think employee wise is really using this during the week down this corner right here. I know Bob, the security guard parts over here in this apartment. That's right, I think it's just people kind of parking there and vendors are parked there. So I think if they would be willing to provide temporary parking signs for those five spaces, it won't affect our space. Those are the only. Yeah. You just do it permanently for the summer. Yeah, it'll be a one-year deal, it sounds like. See what I'm saying, Ron? It won't affect, the only thing it's going to affect is pull cars and the surveyor. At that point in time, I say we just go ahead and let them put up temporary signs with them over here. We're not really utilizing that anywhere during the week anyhow, so then we won't have to move them. They'll just stay there all summer in reserve parking stations. Does that make sense? It'd be easy to do, I mean, I don't, if they're going to provide signs.
Yeah, the street, the street department, so they would make signs.
Just if, if you guys don't mind, someone just, if we approve this, someone get with me, we'll, we'll lay that out.
Okay.
It works the best for everybody. I think I can handle that. Yeah, I'd make, I'll make a motion to move the cars over into the temporary lot for the summer. How's that? For the season. I have a motion in a second. Thank you, Ron, I appreciate that. A motion second, any further? Hearing none, all those in favor, signature public, saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Let's make sure we get a motion on the request of the second, too.
All you want. That's the other map, so I assume that's what she moved between the X.
Yes. Yeah.
I assume she was, it's Howard, he is on the Zoom over there.
Right, yeah.
Hi, Ollie.
Hello, I'm here.
Okay, go ahead with that, with your presentation for your parking lot closings, if you would, please. Street closings and parking lots, because they do take some parking lots, too. I've run everything through, just so everybody knows, I've gotten everything over to Randy Kirk and all the ports. There's really only two days that even affect, and those are two Fridays, the rest of them are all on Saturdays, so it's no big deal. And from what everybody said, there was no conflict. So if we approve this, right now we have no conflict. I would make a motion to, I know you've reviewed it and worked that. I do every year, and it takes some time to go over all that stuff. They did a really good job of giving this information, reporting. You had to really go through it. I have a motion second, any further? Hearing none, all those in favor, signature public, saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Now I'm just thankful we're having something this year.
Me too.
I am so sick and tired of not doing anything. Go for it, please.
Me too.
Pack the lots. Let's just pack it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now Youth Connections. I hope she's still there, my apologies. I am really sorry about that. I get ahead of myself all the time.
All right, it happens. All right, so I just wanted to give you guys a quick update on what we used the grant for last year. We still used it for our court ordered services programs. Even with COVID, we were able to stay pretty much around our same numbers. We've actually had a great increase in supervised visitation, and I look for that to go up even more as more and more people start going back to school, going back to work, that kind of stuff. So we did fit, it has been online, and then it has also been in office as much as possible. We've gone back and forth on supervised visitation, times when we've been in red, we've gone to virtual visitations, times when we've been off red, we've been able to be in the office. Custody evaluation's the same way, we haven't really done any onsite. We've done what we can virtually, and then we've done, if we feel like we need to, we have added in site or home visits and stuff like that. But, so really, that's about it. The only thing, nothing really has changed. We still have our same three court ordered services programs, supervised visits, like I said, we've got twenty-five families right now, families in transition. We are getting about forty-five people a month. That has increased a little bit just recently, I think with more people able to move out and away from each other, right? That they're all starting to do that. I hear that a lot, that the pandemic and being closed up with the same person has caused them to not want to be with that same person anymore. And then custody evaluations, our greatest increase there has been on child molestation cases. Those really had, we've seen about a twenty-five percent uptick on those cases for our custody evaluations. And that's all I've got.
I got a question. What's your total annual budget?
Our total annual budget is two hundred and sixty-five thousand. Last year, we came in twenty-seven percent below that, which did make us eligible for the second round of PPP loans and stuff like that. We've cut staff. The biggest thing for us this last year and moving into this next year is the Samarian Foundation, who is one of our big funders for twenty-five thousand a year, is not funding yet because their fund didn't make enough money. Smithville Foundation cut their funding, which we get twenty-five thousand from them. They cut their funding by fifty percent because their fund didn't draw enough money in two thousand twenty. So that's going to be our biggest crunch this year, is that we're not going to get the same amount due to the fact that our private foundations just didn't bring in enough money last year. And we also were not able to do any events last year. We've done a few virtual events, but they just don't have the same impact as our onsite events. So we're planning an event as soon as we can for September, our Boots Barbecue and Bourbon. And we can't wait for that.
How does that loss of revenue affect your ability to provide service?
So I've had to cut two staff members, so we're only down to four staff members, and so that just strains us more. I've worked a lot more Saturdays, I've worked sixty-hour weeks, fifty-hour weeks, but we are still able to maintain our level of service.
I guess we're approved of her invoice.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signature public, saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries, ma'am.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a great day.
You too.
Elected officials in pertinent is Purdue Extension, I think I have it there.
Yes, so I'm Sarah Hansen, Director of Johnson County Purdue Extension, and here to see if you guys are all right with us putting a sign. We have a rain garden already, that was something that was put in in nineteen, and you guys approved that, now we want to have a sign. This is sort of a mock-up, potentially. Yeah, I think I sent it maybe in the email. So at the biggest, it would be four foot across, three foot tall for the main picture that's on the posts. We're getting a bulk of the money to pay for it through D and R, so just wanted to make sure it's okay with you, since it's going to be on county property.
How much does it cost?
It depends on how far we want to go. I mean, there's power coking and different things you can get, but we're looking at probably six hundred and fifty dollars. The D and R will give us five hundred. We want it to be there for as long as it can be and last through all the elements of the weather, so that does cost a little bit more.
Have a motion second, any further? Hearing none, all those in favor, signature public, saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Vasia, approval agreement for legal services.
Lauren Rainier, San Vasia Director, I'm just needing approval for my attorney, Amy Woods, his agreement with Vasia.
Lauren Rainier, San Vasia Director, I'm just needing approval for my attorney, Amy Woods, his agreement with Vasia.
I think I saw it as rated seven.
Hundred and seventy-five.
It's within the reason, so I'll move it through.
Have a motion and second, any further? Hearing none, all those in favor, signal five, I would say nine.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Treasure.
Good afternoon, Michelle A. Gray, Johnson County Treasure, I am here to ask for approval of a renewal agreement between the county and the Indiana V and V. It's a two-year agreement.
It's a two-year agreement? Four.
Mobile home permit data information.
We've approved it before.
Yeah, it's a four-year agreement, I thought you said it was a two-year.
Two-year.
She thought he was asking the question for, or what? Four years? This is what he was asking.
Two years.
This is fun.
I'll move to approve.
And motion is second, any further? Hearing none, all those in favor, signal five, I would say nine.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
I thought I heard two-year.
She, you did?
Four.
Animal control. Agreement for veterinary services.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, I am here to get approval for our services agreement with Dr. Oliver, and thank you, Sheena, for all the work you've done with this paper, with this agreement, thank you, Commissioner there. Thank you for being the force behind that. Oh, Michael Dell, Director of Johnson County.
Well, I know Bob Oliver, and Julie, I used to compete against him, and my wife did more so than I at the horse shows. And Bob's a good guy, he's, he's one of my favorite vets, although I didn't use him much.
Yeah, he's really doing us a favor by what he's doing, and and you just, well, just the fact that he, he's willing to do that, that's a toughie there, but he gets it off the backs of our people, and that's what I wanted to do.
We do appreciate that, Ron, very, very much.
I could, I'm a little quick.
I'll move to approve, sir.
Have a motion, second, any further? Hearing none, all those in favor, signal five, I would say nine.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, you have a good day, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Public Safety Communications, Johnson County Public Safety and Telecommunications, we need a proclamation. Another year?
Another year.
We've made it another year.
Yes. So I have the proclamation here, she'd like me to read it.
You were Sheena. You guys? I'm not, because my voice is strategy.
So, so whenever you do this, National Public Safety, tell me, give it a proclamation you'd like to to read. Now, whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, emergency medical services, and whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property, and whereas the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Johnson County Public Safety Communications Center, and whereas public, professional public safety telecommunicators are a vital link between citizens and victims, and are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services, and whereas public safety telecommunicators in Johnson County have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients, and therefore, it's proclaimed by the Johnson County Board of Commissioners of the County of Johnson State of Indiana, the week of April eleventh through April seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-one, to Johnson County Public Safety and Telecommunications, with in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our county and citizens safe. Witness whereof, I have here on two set my hand and call the official sale of Johnson County, Indiana, to be fixed on this twelfth day in April, two thousand and twenty-one.
Move to approve, sir.
Have a motion and second, any further? Hearing none, all those in favor, signal five, I would say nine.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ethan, I, I do wanna say, as we, as we make that declaration, that is it, it is important for our 911 center and the job that they do, it is the first line of defense and safety for the area, and I do appreciate all that you do. I do appreciate the professionalism and where we brought our 911 center to under your direction, sir.
Thank you.
And I wanna make sure everybody's aware of that, we do a great job out there.
Thank you.
And I think Sheriff agrees with that, so, thank you very much. We just keep improving everything, our coroner's office is moving up and doing things, it's, it's great. EMA, always, on top of it, we're just, it's going through.
Highway Department.
I don't know.
Yeah.
Stephanie Seacrest, Works of C Management Director. I'm here to get your approval of resolution, a resolution, twenty twenty-one, R dash seven, adopting our county hazard mitigation plan.
How many pages?
There's a lot of information in there, there's a lot of information.
There's a lot, and they must have proved it. We've met the criteria from the Disaster Meditation Act of two thousand, but we don't get the official letter until you guys adopt it, and then I have to go to every town and city council meetings to have them adopted, and then I have to send those adoption papers to them, and then they'll give me that.
You, you could, uh.
Yeah, it's a lot of work.
You could cut about eighty percent of the words out of that.
Yeah.
It just, when I read through this, some interesting things I, I noticed on page twenty, it talks about distribution of population by race and minorities.
Oh, yeah.
According to the twenty eighteen census, they had ninety-one point nine percent white, three point six percent Hispanic Latino, three point five Asian, two point four African Americans, and that adds up to a hundred and one point four percent.
Yeah.
No, we're over, we're overbased.
And on page twenty-four, they got Johnson County major employers and employees, they didn't have Clark Pleasant School System, County Government, or Krogers on that list.
No, because we had to get out of stats from Indiana.
Had to get what?
Get it out of stats from Indiana, it's a website.
Yeah, and then on page, page thirty-three.
Say it's good.
Yeah, it does.
Page thirty-three, they had identified facilities, transportation systems, they had eleven airports, well, I'd count Greenwood and Franklin, but those nine private strips, I don't think those are transportation systems, I
No, but.
But here's the best one.
Yeah.
On page thirty-eight, has this M H overlay critical facilities, they got four dames. I think they meant dams.
Dames.
Yeah, let me read it.
We got more than that.
Yeah, let me read it all.
I could go on, but it, it was kind of, I could, well, I started reading, and you know, may I like numbers anyway, and so every time they present something in percentages, I'm doing it, doing them.
Oh, we had.
And then I got to some of these things, I thought, you know, like they, they go to a lot of trouble telling us what a tornado, or earthquake, a thunderstorm, and throughout all of those things are, which is kind of common.
We introduce it and let you make it work while we're reading it.
I just hope you didn't have to pay that thing for, by the word.
No. No, we had a, we submitted it twice, and they said, they need more information.
Pickleball must spin slow this.
It's been writing.
I would say I don't have enough to do, that's.
I'm gonna move to approve.
I'll second that.
Have a motion and second, any further? Hearing none, all those in favor, signal five, I would say nine.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
My eyes would have been crossing. Highway.
Oh, man, that highway was important. I'm ready.
Favorite part of the meeting, right?
Any shade? No, what?
Last week, Luke Mastin, Highway Director, first item on the agenda is change order number two for the four fifty west construction contract, that reconstruction project. This would be the final change order for the project, and once approved, we'll be able to close the project out with Endot for the portion that we received community crossings funding for.
Move to approve. Motion is second, any further? Hearing none, all those in favor, signal five, I would say nine.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item is related to right-of-way acquisition from the porcelain at sixty-one hundred West Smith Valley Road. Because we need to cover a number of procedural steps in regard to the treatment of the property located at sixty-one hundred West Smith Valley Road in the context of the construction of Interstate sixty-nine, I'm going to call the entire I sixty-nine project and all of the work that has been or will be done in the near, in and near sixty-one hundred West Smith Valley Road for that project, the public road project. I'm also going to refer to the portion of the property that is subject of these proceedings as the Speedway property. So accordingly, I respectfully request the board move the following six items. Number one, ratify the determination that there is a public need to create a northern extension of Molinix Road north of Smith Valley Road in order to accommodate and begin preparation for the pending construction of I sixty-nine, and to facilitate a frontage road along the east side of I sixty-nine to alleviate traffic issues on the Johnson County road network due to I sixty-nine access restrictions. Again, all of that work I refer to as the public road project. Item number two, ratify the construction plans for the public, public road project that call for the use of the approximate four point six eight three acres of property located at sixty-one hundred West Smith Valley Road, owned by Speedway LLC by merger with Speedway Super America LLC, and legally described in the complaint for condemnation filed on behalf of Johnson County on March twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-one. Again, refer to that approximate four point six eight three acres as the Speedway property. Item three, gratification of the determination that the Speedway property is needed for public use by Johnson County for the public road project. Item four, gratification of the appraised value of seventy-two thousand nine hundred dollars as just compensation for the acquisition of Speedway property. Item number five, gratification that the February twelfth, two thousand and twenty-one, offer and negotiation efforts were made to purchase the Speedway property for the amount of seventy-two thousand nine hundred dollars. And item six, ratify the filing of the complaint for condemnation to acquire the Speedway property through the exercise of eminent domain.
Sir, have a motion and second, any further? Hearing none, all those in favor, signal five, I would say nine.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Last item is ratification of the approval of our Endot LPA project coordination contract for the Bridge ninety-eight preliminary, preliminary engineering contract. This is our first contract that we've used Endot's new electronic signature process for. In this particular case, because we're closing in on the end of the fiscal year, I requested that the contract be approved so that we could keep the process moving and then ratified at this meeting, but having gone through this process now, looks like we will have plenty of time to go through our normal legal review and approval of these types of contracts in the future at your normal meetings, your regular meetings, barring any unusual circumstances.
So, let me.
So.
We're voting on this or not?
Well, your vote would be to ratify the previous approval of the contract.
Does eighty percent federal funds go all the way to the hundred and seventy-two thousand?
That's the federal amount.
But it, but it's gonna take all of that?
Yes.
That'll be the mansion?
Yes.
I move to ratify and everything else.
I second that. We just shut our meeting, put that, we can. Have a motion and second, any further? Hearing none, all those in favor, signal five, I would say nine.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Luke, appreciate your work on all that.
Just a real quick question, I, I had the.
You're, you were done. I got a question for you, too.
I had some residence, I had some residence, a lot more, wanted to know when you were gonna start on the roads, the streets over there.
We're still, that's scheduled for this year.
I know, for that.
Well, yeah.
Let's nail it down.
So we're still working through utility coordination to get any of the utilities that are in the way of the construction we need to do out of the way. So realistically, it'll be this summer, if I had to guess, probably mid to late summer before we start that work.
Okay, I'll tell them.
Okay.
Worsfield Connector Road, where are we at? I had somebody call me about that, and I had no clue.
So we were awarded in the last Endot call for projects, two contracts related to that road. One was the reconstruction of Clark School Road, seven hundred north, between seven fifty east and the Shelby County line, that half-mile section or so. Additionally, we were awarded a bridge replacement project for Bridge one oh three, which is just west of there before you get to six hundred east. That bridge project is a project on its own merit, it needs to be replaced, but it just happens to be on that alignment. So we had the initial meetings with Endot kickoff meetings for those. We have not started the RFP process yet to start design, but the construction dollars that were approved for those two projects are for fiscal year twenty twenty-six. So still a ways out.
So we're looking at four years?
Yeah.
Aye.
Yeah. Yeah.
Therefore, we would have a that commitment we can do.
Well, that would just be for those two sections.
That portion.
Yeah, there's still a few miles in between
Right.
where we need to make the connection towards the road. If we continue on the route of applying for federal dollars and we're successful, ten or twelve years at, at best, the applications we submitted this round one was for the bridge, but we also chose a short section of road because they're limited, Endot is limited on how much funding they have to award each year. So we're trying to pick off some of the, the ones that are more likely to be chosen for funding, but we'll have some pretty expensive sections, in particular where we make the connection between Worsfield Road and Clark School Road that may be difficult for Endot to, to fund, given the amount of money they have over the entire state.
Thanks, sir.
Sure.
Kevin, a little bit, just in particular, no questions, Kevin?
I'm not gonna answer the question. And that is a lot of the meeting, and then I'll answer questions. Board Commissioners, approval of independent contractor agreement with Wes Harrison, which, you know, you guys up to stuff on that?
I'm up, I'm, I'm fully in favor of that, I mean, he's done a phenomenal job for you, he's gonna be a huge asset for the county. He's done a phenomenal job with Jalen's, we're running the infrastructure project, I think you're bringing a lot to the table with him, so I'm gonna move to approve.
Thank you. Have a motion and second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signal five, I would say nine.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So load off mine, thank you, guys. And Jason, I'm sure you appreciate the day.
Seen a lot of each other here, like, why aren't we, Jason?
Yeah. We won't go into that.
No, we don't need you on this.
Sentence of lowest quote, award for, of contract percentage, I see thirty-six dash one dash twelve dash five provision of the wall in the auditor's office, and for, you probably don't, weren't aware of this at all, I don't think, but yeah. We're adding an, an office into the auditor's office, separating payroll and HR. Something really needs to be done, but fortunately, it's, it's gonna be very cost-effective because we don't have to do a whole lot to do it, but I think it's gonna help the flow of things through there and trafficking where things happen back there, so it's a good idea, we have it, we have the money to do it, so we can bond somebody. Yeah, it's a good idea. We have it. We have the money to do it, so in bonds, we'll do that.
Brian, I do, would like to report that the, uh, transfer books are now officially available online. So all of those books in the back are available to taxpayers.
Online, they're available, because we are moving some of those out, bringing them down into storage, safe storage that, since that we got to, to get into people, but we'll be moving those out to make room. Uh, but they need to be moved out anyway.
Correct.
I'd make a motion to approve.
I gotta be.
Yeah, read it first.
What? Okay.
Why is it? We got them.
Okay. All right, you got three quotes, um, verses from an extra hand for seven thousand four hundred and twenty-six dollars and three cents. The next was from C W Sneed, the amount of the quote, seven thousand one hundred and twenty dollars and three cents. And the low quote was Duke Commercial at six thousand nine hundred and seventy-one dollars and three cents.
What is it with the first?
I have no idea.
It's a computer program, I assume. I'll, I'll assume it is, too. I'm sure making a motion to approve Duke Commercial with Peyton Lewis, most irresponsible, damn. Have a motion and second for Duke, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say five, I would say nine.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Now we need to make contact getting started. Cause that's a, I'm a priority. Anyway, Duke's getting a lot of work with us here lately. I'm pleased to see that. New business claims. Go for it, Ron.
I don't have anything on claims, uh, because we're not doing credit cards yet.
Yeah.
I'm a gentleman. I didn't see anything. Sheriff's not here for a few months. I moved to approve claims.
No comments?
Yeah, I'm going to do it.
Very curious.
Yeah, it's unusual, right?
Have a motion and second to approve claims, any further? Hearing none, all those in favor, say five, I would say nine.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. And is Sheriff left for no reason? No, he's still, he just hired him.
I did, he already got the jail closed down. He's on the news or something.
Yeah, the news comes again a lot. Commissioner Menace for three twenty-two, two thousand twenty-one, three thousand, three twenty-two, two thousand twenty-one special meeting. Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and second, any further? Hearing none, all those in favor, say five, I would say nine.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. And then also under new business, Commissioner Walmsley.
I've got a change order that was built into our contingency fund for all the fixed tables that go into the actual cell pods. So it's a total of hundred and twelve thousand five hundred and ninety-eight dollars for that change order. So.
You're going to deal with that legally?
Yeah.
With this being said, this won't be in, they said, until like July or August if we order it.
Or this order for my remodel, just a plain old entry door, it won't be in for like three months.
Uh-huh. So I usually, I, I just got this receipt this, this morning. I would usually put it on the agenda, but it, uh, I don't want to wait another two weeks because it could end up.
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and second, any further? Hearing none, all those in favor, say five, I would say nine.
Aye.
Close.
I got one thing here real quick.
All right.
I'm the Commissioner's representative on the transportation, whatever, all of that study that we've been doing, and, uh, and the Johnson County counterparts have voted to use Indigo as a pass-through of funds. So that, this, the Donut Counties, uh, here and for on, uh, fifty-eleven funds, I think it was, or fifty-oh-three, I can't remember. Anyway, we were classified as rural, and that came through the Commissioners or through the county. Um, and now we've been reclassified as urban, and in so doing, we had to pick either Indigo or Serta for the distribution of the funds, and we voted for Indigo. And I was told that I just need to make both of you aware of that, which I am just now. And take action. Just need to make you aware of it.
Just to get a reaction from this, or?
Luke might want to, hey, Luke might want to say something.
Luke.
I, I don't know how we got classified as urban. Agriculture, meat, elephants involved in all that.
Actually, Commissioner Wes's description was very, very good, but, uh, yes, essentially, some of the routing that, that Access Johnson County has been doing is within what's considered the urbanized area of Indianapolis, to the northern part of Johnson County, basically. So that created an issue with the federal funding that Access receives, which led to the, uh, and it did just affect us, the other rural carriers around Indianapolis, um, had to make the choice between working with Serta or working with, um, Indigo. Uh, I know Commissioner Wes was involved in, in the interviews. Um, that process was finalized at the, um, NBO Policy Committee meeting a couple of meetings ago, I think. Essentially, it was the policy committee's ultimate decision on which entity to go with to manage those funds, and, uh, Indigo was selected by the policy committee.
Is this any way effective of what we're doing now with Access Johnson County and to work Texas or?
It doesn't. The, the issue is it, the federal dollars now come from a different pot, and they can't be managed by Endot. They have to be managed, um, for the metropolitan area. That's why our options for management were Indigo or Serta. That does ultimately lead to a slight reduction in, uh, revenue, uh, because of, of the funding source changing. The four rural carriers chose essentially to divide that, that shortfall up evenly between them. Uh, so there is a small reduction in, in revenue, but for now, uh, things should work pretty similar to how they did before.
So we're still, we're still not utilizing that type of transportation for South and Green.
I don't know if they go over to county.
I'm not talking about Access, I'm just talking about the, the Endot means to bring down.
That's Indigo.
Indigo, yeah.
Yeah, on a, on a red line and that. Now, they still just come to Greenwood.
So that's effective.
No, that, that's a.
That would have any shape on that.
Uh, in terms of, of management of federal dollars, one of the reasons Indigo made the most sense is because they already receive and track grants, federal grants, to fund their operations. So it was essentially very little, if any, additional overhead for them to just take that duty on for the rural transit providers.
Yeah, plus the Serta wanted a seventy-five thousand dollar annual fee to administer.
Serta's over there.
Indigo didn't run anything.
Serta's over there.
As I understand, I think the money goes through Indigo anyway, and it would have gone to Serta, right? And that the pass-through on that?
You know, I, I don't remember if it would have gone through Indigo or not. It would have had to go through the city in some form or fashion.
Yeah.
Because it's, it's designated for the metropolitan area, and, yeah, it may have been Indigo, I just don't remember. Anyway, I probably made that complicated, sir, but I.
You made it a little tougher to understand than Ron did.
I didn't really get to talk a lot when I was up here before, so.
You got the weeds. Thanks, Luke. Any public comments, events, or less? Seeing none?
For the German, sir.
Second. Have a motion and second, work here. Thank you very much.